Good morning, everyone. I will call this Board of County Commissioners meeting to order. It is July 8, 2025. We'll start with a salute to the flag. I see Taylor Adams in the audience if he could lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. We'll now move into roll call. Madam Clerk.
Alexis Hill, Chair.
Here.
Jeanne Herman, Vice Chair.
Here.
Commissioner Clark.
Present.
Commissioner Garcia.
Here.
Commissioner Andriola.
Present.
Interim Manager Kate Thomas.
Here.
Chief Deputy DA Mike Larch.
Here.
Madam, you have a quorum.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into our public comment. Ms. Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This is public comment, and comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. A news time may not be allocated to other speakers, and the commission will also hear public comment during individual action items with that comment limited to three minutes per person. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole, and virtual public comment may be taken when facilities are available. A speaker's viewpoint will not be restricted, however, reasonable restrictions may be imposed upon the time, place, and manner of speech. Irrelevant statements, unduly repetitious statements, and personal attacks that would objectively antagonize or incite others are examples of speech that may be reasonably limited. The Board of County Commissioners carries out the business of Washoe County and its residents during its meetings. The presiding officer may order a person removed if the person's conduct or statements disrupt the order or safety of the meeting. Warnings about disruptive conduct or comments may or may not be given prior to removal. Furthermore, certain disruptions of public meetings are criminal acts as defined under NRS, which may result in prosecution in appropriate cases.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
First up, we have Terry Brooks, followed by Oscar Williams.
Welcome, Mr. Brooks.
Good morning. It's me, Terry Brooks, again. And today I came here to face the act of discrimination when it comes to housing and race. I grew up in a Midwest town where there was discrimination of race, and it seemed that the majority was in control of putting minorities in their so-called place. At that time, if a house was for sale by a member of the majority, they could decide whether or not to sell it to a member of a minority. Or if a house or apartment was for rent by someone of the minority, they could decide whether or not to rent to someone of a minority. And as a result of what the majority decided, most of that town I lived in was racially divided. So for a long time, the town was segregated, but eventually things improved and that town became more integrated. Then, when I moved here to Reno, Nevada, and learned more about this state, I learned that there's a similar history here when it comes to real estate. Long ago, if two people of different races practiced cohabitation, according to Nevada law, that was a violation. And I learned that many real estate deeds that were owned by the majority race had restrictive covenants preventing them from being sold to another race. So for a long time, there's been a lot of division, but more recently, we've learned to try some revision. The more we live together, the more we get to know each other, and the more we know each other, the more we learn from each other. When we are divided, does anyone benefit? When we come together, we all benefit. I've heard that it's birds of a feather that like to flock together. I've also heard that it's right now that we all need to come together. I would like to thank you all for listening to me today, and the more time I spend with you, the more I learn to say.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Oscar Williams, followed by Maureen McElroy.
Good morning. I have a handout. Do you mind, Mrs. Galacine, please? See if you can pick that up. You can grab that on the overhead.
Thank you.
Okay. All right. I apologize. I don't have a good working color printer, so you've got to bear with my poor reproduction on this thing. I'm here to talk about the county's organizational chart. I was reading the Raftellus report the other day, specifically in regards to the officer registrar voters, and I noted some inconsistencies, maybe something rather erroneous. The officer registrar voters on this is right here, right there, okay? That's the officer registrar of voters. So up here, we have the county commissioners, we have the county manager, we have Assistant One, Assistant Two, and the financial manager, and then underneath that, in between, we have down here the registrar voters. The clerk who assists the registrar voters in the conduct of elections is way over here. Let's see. Where did that? There it is, right there. There's the county clerk. All right. There's no direct lines of communication between the registrar voters and the county clerk, and that needs to be corrected, okay? Moreover, the registrar voters is not underneath the county manager. There's no statute or code that suggests that. For example, Washoe County Code 5.451, Clause 2, says, and I quote, and this is regards to the registrar voters, "The person appointed to such office shall serve in such office solely at the pleasure of the Board of County Commissioners." That's facially clear in my book, guys. Additionally, the registrar voters is kind of tethered to the clerk in many ways, at least in terms of the state statutes and also that code. Clause 4 of that same code, 5.451, the language is the same as the statute, NRS 244164, "The registrar voter shall assume all the powers and duties vested in and imposed upon the county clerk, except relating to the preparation and delivery of certificates of election." So it's quite clear that those two work together to conduct elections. The manager is not a part of running elections in Washoe County. You guys are the chief officers overseeing elections, and the registrar voters should be directly underneath you. So on my little organizational chart here, I took the liberty to scribble in some little notes for purposes of discussion. So here we have the ROV directly underneath you guys. Below them is the clerk and the little dot-dot-dot liaison, and the manager and assistant managers connecting to that. And also over here, I have legal counsel, because when I stand here, I'm looking at five county commissioners, county manager, excuse me, a county manager, legal counsel, and the clerk. So the little dynamic of this board isn't even properly reflected.
Thank you.
Maureen McElroy. Maureen McElroy, followed by Penny Brock.
My name is Maureen McElroy, for the record. I'm a native Nevadan and a longtime Reno resident. I'm speaking here before the Commissioners today regarding the defined benefit program PERS. There have been some negative comments to the Commissioners about the Nevada PERS program, and I'm here to counter that. As you know, PERS provides a secure, reasonable base income to qualified employees who've been employed by a public employer such as State of Nevada or Washoe County, and once those employees retire, PERS is dispersed to them on a monthly basis. Working public employees contribute half to that plan via payroll deduction, and their employer, for instance, Washoe County, contributes to the other half. These contributions are invested by an appointed board to provide retirement income for those vested employees. Nevada PERS has the best investment strategy among public retirement systems in the country and has one of the best records of return. So I want to strongly counter the continued narrative that our public employees are being paid on the backs of our citizens. It is a benefit that is contributed to and earned over time by hard-working Nevadans, and again, our public employees bear half the cost of PERS deducted from their biweekly paychecks, much like Social Security. PERS provides a living income for retired employees. I want to state what's wrong with that. I would actually like that for all of our working citizens. These retirees spend that income in Nevada, supporting businesses and infusing our local economy, and those dollars keep our community going. Maybe what we should be asking is how can we create such a program for all workers instead of why are these retirees getting a living income? Thank you so much for your time. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Penny Brock.
Ms. Brock has documents that I will distribute.
Penny Brock, for the record, American citizen. I could not see an American flagpole outside in the courtyard of the county complex. I want to know why. Why don't we have a flagpole with a huge American flag? You're getting federal dollars. This is America. We need our American flag in our county complex. Secondly, I'm now speaking as a voter. As you may see, I'm wearing a Doge t-shirt, and I'm here to tell you that the Elections Department is getting Doge'd by the Department of Justice. The Trump DOJ launches a nationwide election integrity probe. For years, Americans were silenced for questioning 2020 election. Now, under the POTUS, Real Donald Trump, and the Justice Department, they are demanding answers. DOJ officials have sent formal inquiries to election officials across the country, investigating voting machines, cybersecurity protocols, and access to voter rolls. Criminal charges for negligent officials are on the table. This is about national security and constitutional duty. I would like to know who at the county got the letter from the DOJ. Is it being buried from you, the Commissioners? Is it being buried from the voters? We need to know who got the letter from the DOJ. It's our right to know. It's your right to know, and we want to know how that will be handled, because we know we've got problems in our election department. We've got problems with the voting machines, all kinds of things, cybersecurity protocols, we know that. We've got problems with the voter rolls, we know that. So I'm glad to tell you that our Elections Department is getting Doge'd, not by the actual Doge people, but by the DOJ, which is much more serious. There was an article in the New York Times that explained that. Probably won't have time to read the whole thing, but you know, when the New York Times prints something, you better listen, because they do their investigative reporting. So it says, "Justice Department explores using criminal charges against election officials. Such a path could drastically raise the stakes for federal investigations of state or county officials, bringing the department and the threat of criminalization into the election system. The spokesman for the Justice Department, Gates McEvick, said the agency will leave no option off the table when it comes to promoting free, fair, and secure elections." Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in, but I do have emails to place on the record.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item four, Manager Thomas.
Thank you. This is your Commissioner, County Managers' announcements, reports, and updates to include Boards and Commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us?
I have a couple quick things, if you may. We have a couple of board openings we like to announce. One you'll need to act quickly on, we have an open space in Regional Parks Commission opening for all districts, and that'll begin at the time of appointment, and that ends in June of 2027. That application closes tomorrow on the 9th, so folks want to get on that, they should look on our website. The Senior Services Advisory Board has an alternate position for all districts that is open, and that'll begin at the time of appointment and end in June of 2029, and that application closes on the 30th, so you've got a little bit of time for that. I would love to point out that we've got some new signage out in the roundabout, which is right by the American flag, so I encourage you to visit that signage. It's redone, so it helps with wayfaring at the complex, right there in the roundabout in the front, which is great. And then I just wanted to take a minute to remind the Board that not only the registrar voters, I know you all received an email, but you have 10 department heads at the county that are appointed and serve at the pleasure of the Board, and two unclassified management positions. And then in February of 2023, the Board adopted a process by which there is the recruitment participation from the Board, the appointment, and then their performance evaluation. So you do have a level of oversight over those positions, which I think is important to note for you and for the public. So I have a list of those positions, if anybody needs them, that are appointed by the Board, but you have a robust group of folks that do that, so those are my announcements at the time.
Thank you. Vice Chair Herman. Okay. Commissioner Garcia.
Good morning, everybody. Mr. Brooks, I liked your sign today. Is he still in the room? It said equals is greater than divide symbol, so I thought that was a nice touch. But my announcement today is more about child welfare. On Saturday, we received some horrific news about a child, a baby, newborn baby, to be specific, that was abandoned in a dumpster, and I just wanted to take a moment to say, express my gratitude to everybody that played a role. In Saturday's events, we had the community member, first and foremost, who found the baby, climbed in the dumpster and retrieved the baby, notified the authorities, and Shugky Meadows Fire Protection District were the ones who transported the baby to the hospital. Wanted to say thanks to everybody at Renown who cared for this child, and also to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office for a swift investigation. And so just a reminder to the public that safe havens are found in a variety of places in our community. They are fire stations, police stations, hospitals, so there's always a place to go during a time of crisis. And I just wanted to take a moment to remind those that are in the room or those who are listening about the need for mentors, foster parents, adoptive parents. We have such a critical need here in Washoe County. Currently, we have 580 children in our custody, and 21 of those children are in emergency shelters that are under the age of 10. And so you think about this newborn baby that had this horrific experience, but we have other children in the community who face just tremendous loss and trauma and need people quickly. And so if you or anybody else had that moment on Saturday where you're like, I would take that baby in a heartbeat, or I would take in that child, I encourage you to reach out to our Human Services Agency to get connected, because there's a lot of ways that you can give back and do so during a really critical time of need. So right now, we're looking for approximately 20 foster homes, so please help get the word out. We need you. These children need you, and thank you to everybody who responded on Saturday.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And Commissioner Andriola. Okay. Commissioner Clark.
No comments at this time.
Okay. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item five, Manager Thomas.
Thank you. Item five is an EDON update, and we have Taylor Adams here to talk about Western Nevada's economic outlook for fiscal year 2425.
Welcome.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Good morning, Madam Chair, members of the Commission, for the record. My name's Taylor Adams, and also thank you so much for letting me lead the pledge. That was a very nice surprise, and so I see that you all have a full agenda, so I'll do everything I can to move quickly through what we think is some pretty exciting information. Just to quickly remind the public, what is EDON? We're the Economic Development Authority of Western Nevada. We are, it's important to know, we are a public-private partnership, so unlike many of our colleagues around the country that are purely publicly funded, we are actually, as you all know, we are a contractor of yours effectively, but over 78% of our revenues this year came from the private sector, leaving about 22% to come from the public sector, for which we are very grateful. The largest of those investors is the Governor's Office of Economic Development, but then right behind that is Washoe County. And so thank you so much for what you do to support the growth of our economy here in Western Nevada. We are organized into four primary teams. We do business attraction, business retention and expansion, entrepreneurial development, and then we were a new division for us, which traditionally has been exclusively working on workforce and education. It's now strategic partnerships and workforce, and that's really just an effort to broaden our reach in the community, to try to be more places, and we've put some resources around that that we'll talk about in just a moment. In addition to what's here, we also, of course, have an investor relations team, a marketing team, and then our operations group. In total, we're a team of 18. And so what happened in 2025, and you'll notice I say 2025, I should say fiscal year 25, as you know, but just for the sake of the public, we run on the same fiscal year that public agencies in Nevada use, and so we run from July 1 to June 30. So I am happy to report that what we're showing you here is as of June 30, so the end of our last fiscal year. A pretty good year in Western and Northern Nevada. One of the things is, I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we have faced economic headwinds in the last year. Now, what is that? Market uncertainty, uncertainty generally around what is an unknown tax environment. We're grateful to the federal government for bringing some closure to that over this last weekend. Also, tariffs have certainly affected us in the short term here in Northern Nevada. We do see some of that abating, and we see the market finding some certainty there, but probably the largest single thing in the market that's been affecting us over these last 12 months is the Fed's lingering restrictive policy as it relates to their interest rate. We are hopeful that they will deliver on the two cuts they promised this year. We believe that'll really give us the boost that we need. But that said, we'd still made some great announcements. You can see those listed here. I'm going to show you some charts and graphs here in a minute, but I always like to start with the data so that people can see it, have a chance to digest it, and we can answer questions about it. What did we see? And I'm going to show you 2024 as well in a moment here, but we saw logistics and distribution continues to be strong for us. It stays at between 28 and 30 and 35% year over year. We saw advanced manufacturing, going back to the, really starting with the Tussle announcement in 2017, coming forward. We've really seen advanced manufacturing become a real strength of the region. What's interesting is we're seeing that migrate into tech-focused advanced manufacturing. We're seeing that Northern Nevada is the place where tech manufacturing that is being discovered, really in the Bay Area and in Silicon Valley, comes to scale. We offer a bang for the buck and a quality of employee and training that's just hard for a lot of other communities to duplicate, and so really proud of the work that's gone into that space. And then also, you see technology and information technology. Won't surprise you, it's been a present conversation in the community. That's primarily driven by the data center growth that we're seeing in our region. So about half of the pipeline last year, why do I, I always get the question, do I think that that's going to be something we can expect going forward? And the short answer is, I don't know. I can tell you that with interest rates where they are, the reason that we see so much data center activity in the present is that is the most financeable deal in the market right now. We do think as rates come down, there will be other deals that step forward, that offer a little broader value, but nonetheless, we're happy for the growth that we've seen, because this is great tax base that does not require an abundance of service. We are facing the same issue that every community in America is facing. As you all know, I try to give you an honest look on what we're seeing. The energy required to power data centers is very challenging. No community in America has the answer right now. The first one that solves it is probably the big winner in this space, but the reason you're not seeing an abundance of those announcements right now is we're working closely with our colleagues at NV Energy to ensure that we're being judicious in the capacity that we have to ensure that we can continue to meet the ongoing needs of the community. So the reason you're not seeing an abundance of these announcements right now is because we have some things that we've got to work through. How did '25 compare to '24? A quick look at the companies from '24, and you can see a much bigger pie, or much more slices in sort of the pie of what we did. Why is it that really is about the interest rates that we're talking about and some of the uncertainty we've seen in the market? We do anticipate, now that what is commonly known as the Big Beautiful Bill has been approved, and we know, and companies now know what their ongoing tax liability is going to look like, that's not an endorsement or a criticism of the bill, that's just saying business likes certainty. So knowing what tax liability is takes that question off the table. We do think as rate cuts come into focus, you'll see more diversity coming back into the economy. Here's what our teams have done. So in business attraction, what did that mean? Well, we, just over 50, or just, I think it was 1,497 new jobs that we announced last year, 8 million square feet of new business being created. Why is that important? That is your tax base, so we like to always give you that one. We hosted 93 companies over the 12 months, and that 8 million square feet accounts for about $3 billion in new capital investment in our community. That $3 billion is not pure real estate cost. That does include contents, because obviously there is taxable value there as well. Business retention. We're putting a lot of focus on business retention right now. We have a healthy economy, and this is something new for us to talk about, but we want to see 80% of the new jobs in a healthy economy come from existing business. Because those are, those are the Nevada companies that are here, and if the promises that we make to companies that are moving here aren't true for the companies that are here, then my group's got it wrong. And so we're putting real intentionality around our existing industries. And so you can see some of that here. There's a slide in just a minute that talks about sort of some new programs that we're launching to get into that. Entrepreneurial development, also same thing. The companies that start here and grow here will always be our stickiest customers, and they are the companies that are here because they believe in the cultural pillars that define us as a community. So you can see, again, real resource coming into entrepreneurial development more. We've always been, our region has always been a leader in this space, but we're sort of doubling down on those efforts. And with your help, and we'll see that in startup week in just a moment, strategic partnerships, you can see here, we're reaching out to the, where we work exclusively in the commercial and industrial part of the economy. Our economy is much broader than that, and we need to know what's going on in healthcare and professional services and what's happening on Main Street. And so these strategic partnerships are about us being more ingrained in the community at a deeper level every day. Here's something really exciting for our region, as we've, and I'm watching the timer here to make sure I get it all in, I promise you.
You're okay. You can run a little over.
Thank you. So as we, it's no secret that California has been the gift that keeps on giving for our community, but for 40 years, we've sort of been mining this and working this same vein. We asked ourselves the question two years ago, what does it look like if we broaden our approach, recognizing there are 46 states in the lower 48 that aren't Nevada and California? And so we did. We looked east, we looked south, we looked north, and here's what's great. We saw projects located here from 10 different states during fiscal year 2024. We took that and said, well, what if we look at the rest of the world? Well, here's what's great. We're now actively working projects on three different continents around the world with companies that want to be here and invest in our community. I would be remiss at this point if I didn't say that, yeah, I mean, before I get the question, yes, the tariff conversation is a driver of international investment in Nevada right now, particularly something I'm really excited about. We're seeing unprecedented activity in defense spending, so these are basically American, these are companies that make a product that is needed by the Department of Defense for something else that they make, and so we're seeing some of those companies find their way to Nevada, because we do offer a unique benefit there. Really exciting. When you see the 2025 list, we've added four more states to that list, and so really exciting stuff. Quickly on, I mentioned business retention and expansion. We've historically seen between 125 and 150 businesses per year, and the goal was to get to everybody once every three to four years. And by the way, with looking at where the region was at the time, I would tell you, had I been here, that would be exactly the same strategy. As our region has matured, where we are, what I believe is critical right now is we need to see 600 businesses a year, ideally 650. And so what you're, we have just launched three new programs that will achieve that. Now, we wanted to test market it. So over the last, over this last fiscal year, we set a very ambitious goal for ourselves to go from 140 in my first year here to see 250 businesses a year. We did. In the fiscal year that started on July 1, this year, we're going to see 450, and the next year, we're going to get to, we're going to see 600 businesses a year. For us to be connected with your community at the level that you need us to be, we got to get there. And so we doubled our output last year, we're doubling our output again this year, and then we're going to get to what we call a mature position in our following fiscal year. But I'm very proud of the work that our team has done, and I'm so grateful for our business community and their willingness to be responsive to the meeting requests we've been sending out, and so really excited to see where this is going and really, really looking forward to giving you a more to giving you a more robust toolkit for our existing businesses that are already here, already paying taxes and already employing people here every day. I want to mention Startup Week quickly. So grateful, Startup Week only happened because of your support. As you all likely know, but for the sake of the community, on the back end of the pandemic, you all were so grateful to work with us to secure a grant that allowed us to create this programming. In our first year, we thought we'd have 300, we had 300 spots, we had 600 businesses, 600 existing small businesses and wannabe businesses register for Startup Week number one. We said, okay, 600 is great. That's probably about, well, as you can see, we had over 1,000 registered attendees last year. Startup Week, Startup Week version three is coming in September. And we have, we're already exceeding what we had last year. And we think, I don't know that we'll double it again, but we're going to continue to see growth here. And I just want to say thank you to all of you for your support of that initiative because it doesn't happen without your partnership and your willingness to support us in this grant. And what's great, we're seeing so many exciting things happening with Startup Week. We've now picked up a Startup World Cup sanction. So every year now, we're going to have a pitch competition here. We started first last year, we're doing it again this year. And the winner of that goes straight to the Startup World Cup semifinals. And I'm to have an opportunity to win a million dollar funding opportunity. But more importantly, and that's in San Francisco every year, and it's so exciting. Secondarily though, so we'll be doing that every year. But what's great is even if we don't win, the companies that get to pitch there are seen by investors from all over the world, and it brings money into our community. The one condition, of course, is that if you do that, if you come out of our Startup Week, the visit, when you get that money, you do it right here. And so thank you for your partnership on that. It's a critical part of our programming now. I know I went a minute over my time. I'm so sorry, Madam Clerk, but with that, I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you so much, and thanks for respecting the time. We appreciate it. I'll go down the line. Vice Chair Herman, do you have anything? And Commissioner Garcia, who sits on the EDON board for us, go ahead.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you so much for being here today. You just had an anniversary, right?
I did, two years.
Two years, so you just completed your second year in July 1. And it must have been interesting coming from way back east in the southeast all the way to Nevada. And you've made some tremendous strides in a short amount of time. So congratulations and thank you for your leadership. In these board meetings, we often talk about water, energy, roads, workforce gaps. Those are common themes that pop up in our EDON meetings as areas of focus for us. And I know that as you're talking to these potential prospective companies that are interested in coming here, they're also very much interested in things like education, childcare, healthcare, outdoor recreation, and most importantly, housing inventory. And those are the infrastructure needs that we are tasked with here at the county and that we keep our eyes on very, very closely. You've talked a little bit about where you've been the last couple of years, but I'm really curious, given the uncertainty, about where you see us going in the next five and what your strategy is going to be for our region.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Garcia. And so as you know, because mentioning those board meetings, and I think a big part of why the EDON board selected me is I have always been an advocate for what I call sustainable development. Now, you won't find that in any economic development textbooks. That's kind of a personal thing of mine. But I believe that people that do what I do have an obligation to work within what can be sustainably delivered in a community. And so, and when we're talking about sustainable delivery, we're talking, water, I mean, basically critical resources are right at the top of that list. But then also we have to look at our transportation resources. We have to look at, look at all the infrastructure for the region and make sure that we are not overtaxing that with the projects we bring in. I mean, in my industry, probably the leader in this space is Deloitte, who actually has a social impact model for economic development now that they're trying to stand up, that we're following pretty closely. I'd love to bring it here, once they get it where they want it. But to that end, yes, I mean, we no longer recruit large water users. We see the impacts that some of our colleagues in the South, specifically in the state of Arizona, are having around large projects they've cited. And they're buying, I mean, they're buying entire cities in Mexico and now pipelining the water into their community to cover the needs of the projects they've cited. We want to make sure we're never in that place. So we work very closely with regional infrastructure providers to ensure that we're not overtaxing and not getting ahead of them with the projects that we're recruiting. Housing is probably at the top of, if you ask me on any given day, what's the most important thing that I'm working on that doesn't directly, you know, involve recruiting companies or growing companies that are already here? And that's housing. We, Dan Morgan at the Builders Association has become a close colleague of mine. Rarely, rarely a day goes by that he and I don't talk about something. We talk about the chicken and the egg. I don't know if I'm the chicken, or if he's the chicken, or if I'm the egg, or if he's the egg. But what we know is he can't, he can't be successful without us, and we can't be successful without him. And so we're working every day to try to ensure that we've got a plan for what are the coming housing needs for our community. And not just what would be owner-occupied luxury housing. I mean, I mean, housing for all of our citizens, whether they're actively engaged in our workforce or not. We see the challenge that's facing this community as it relates to housing for senior citizens and see the way our population is aging and the resources that are needed there. And so we're working to get better at that every day.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner Andriola.
Thanks. Congratulations on your anniversary.
Thank you so much.
Where does two years go? Just flew by, didn't it? I really appreciate the presentation. I almost wish you would come more often, to be honest with you. I think it's great in terms of the aggressive, in terms of strategically aggressive on your points that you made specifically in terms of, you know, starting out to 120 to 125 and then progressively moving with 600 on recruitment is a goal. And you use the term mature position. And I'm wondering if you could speak to what, it's almost piggybacking a little off of Commissioner Garcia's in terms of five years, but it seemed to fit that within that five-year frame, timeframe? And what can Washoe County do? What should we consider moving forward? Because that's, that was companies. I don't know what the numbers of employees that that equates to. So I'm just curious what challenge you may have with that and what could we do or consider, whether it be housing and some of the other services that were already shared, but just curious on that.
So thank you, Commissioner Andriola. And I will do my best not to get ahead of this commission with other things you may be considering as I answer this. But without diving into the intricacy of what is Nevada tax policy, I mean, obviously, I recruit all over the world every day on Nevada's low taxes, and I think that's, and the ability, and Nevada's unwavering support of free markets, which I think is critical. That said, when it comes to paying for public infrastructure, Nevada is somewhat addicted to growth. And so it's also a state with only two metropolitan areas, this being one of them. And so certainly there is a broad set of tools that have been deployed in the other metropolitan area within our state, which we've certainly seen be, I guess, an enabler of residential construction in particular. We think that there's probably some value for that here, recognizing that's got to be measured. I don't, obviously, we've just finished a general assembly session. There was a conversation about reset at sale and this that never really gotten, in that session, that never really got moving again. So what we know is for at least the next two years, that's not going to be a conversation. And so I do think with the market where it is, and this is, I'll freely admit that, you know, that Dan could probably speak to this with more on the residential side than I can. I could certainly speak to it on the industrial side. But there are tools that are being utilized in other parts of the state that are allowing infrastructure construction to happen in a way that is true to Nevada's principles around growth, paying for growth, that I think could be utilized here. That said, I don't want to get ahead of any conversation this body has had yet because clearly, obviously, we're honored to partner with this commission. And we will work with, we will work hard to deliver the development you want with, within whatever the environment is here that you give us. But I'd be remiss if I didn't say that we see those working in other parts of the state and we see the success they're bringing.
Thanks. And I do think that there's opportunities that we can continue to engage in conversation and looking at the tools that are already available and how we can maximize that potential for the benefit, whether it's economic, quality of life, balancing infrastructure, and some of the needs. Because that's what it really is. You know, you're out there doing a great job in terms of recruiting, but they are going to come here. We want them to stay here. And you mentioned, my second question really is, you mentioned the importance of obviously retention. And any business will tell you that it costs more to get a new customer than it is to retain a customer. In this case, having an 80% goal or meeting that goal, and I'm wondering where that falls on the 80% of retention in terms of a benchmark? Is that high? Is that average? I just, I'm not real sure, and I was curious if you could answer that.
So if you look at the Professional Economic Development Committee, and I would say most of us that are members of the International Economic Development Corporation would tell you that in a healthy market, you want to see 80% come from existing industry. So that is an industry benchmark. It's considered a best practice now. I won't deny it. It is not, it is not an easy, the reason it's a best practice is it's not easy to achieve. But I can tell you for, probably for the first time in my career, I believe that we have a community that can do it. And so we're leaning in hard to ensure that that happens here. Right now, we're at about 50%, 50/50. We need to grow.
Thanks. And I mentioned this during the last meeting, but I feel like I need to mention it because data centers is on the tip of everybody's tongue. And Dr. Smith, in terms of being the Director of the Regional Planning Agency, is looking at creating a standard, and I'm sure you're in great discussions with him. I just wanted to make sure that there's an opportunity to stay engaged in that process because he is, you know, really putting that on a top-tier objective. And so I just, I'm sure you're well aware of that, but I wanted to bring that up.
We are, and we're grateful that conversation is happening in the region. And in the community I served prior to coming, I mean, coming here from Virginia, Virginia is the largest data center market in the country. And so I had the pleasure of getting to put together a similar set of what would be data center standards for the community I served prior to coming here. So we welcome the opportunity to participate in that conversation.
Well, it looks like Dr. Smith is going to have a great partner in terms of gathering information. So thank you, thanks for all your work, and thanks for always looking at maintaining the quality of life and that balance and really what we can do on the infrastructure side and what we can look at maybe differently with, again, using the tools that are already in our toolbox. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Commissioner Andriola, as the Chair, the new Chair of TOMO, I know that we're also going to have that discussion. You're going to be bringing that to us in the fall. So we'll have many agencies looking at that.
We will, thank you.
Yes, absolutely. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair, and thank you, Mr. Adams, for your report. And it looks like positive things are in the future, so keep up the good work. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner.
And to Commissioner Garcia's question, are you hearing things that we need to know as a board on quality of life issues that we need to be tackling? I mean, we know, obviously, the housing, the daycare issues, how expensive it is for daycare, also in our community. We know that parks and rec are a big priority and all these things cost money. And I really appreciate that you're at the table. We know that Nevada's small government, we're not going to change that. But we also know that there are structural, there's some structural issues that need to be looked at as well. So I'm just curious if there's anything else you want to highlight or things that you want to bring to us as a board?
Sure. And both professionally and personally, as a parent of four, and by the way, Commissioner Garcia, the, just also as a parent, from your comments, I'm so grateful that that baby is going to be cared for. I mean, just what a, just what a heartbreaker. But that said, my own wife exited the workforce after our second child was born because, I mean, look, it was absolutely our decision to have four children in five and a half years. We got a late start, but you know, she wanted a big family, she's got one. But I can tell you, she's far more, I mean, most of you all have met her, she's far more capable than I am. But she elected to exit her career because at that point in our lives, when we were just getting started, childcare was the primary thing that we couldn't afford. And so that is still true today. And in many cases, it's gotten worse. And so we were grateful to the governor for, in his economic development bill, including some provisions around, you know, that would incentivize companies, the companies we're recruiting, the companies that are here to offer childcare as, you know, to their employees. Unfortunately, his economic development bill, I mean, that portion of the bill did not make it through. But I would tell you, you hear a lot in America today about workforce participation. There are a lot of families that are sitting on the sidelines, not because they want to, because they have to, because they can't, because they simply can't afford childcare or they can't, they can't afford the quality of childcare that they need for their children. And so anything that you can do in that space, we would welcome. We're working on that every day ourselves. We believe that's critical. And then you did hit the nail on the head. Great public spaces are something that every, that, this is taking off my economic developer hat, putting on my old city planner hat. And, you know, at the end of the day, I still believe that placemaking is the way that great communities sort of grow, thrive, and build culture. And so I would tell you, anything that we can do to continue to create great public spaces that give our citizens the opportunity to congregate productively and really help the community.
Well, we got a lot on our plates, and I know you have a lot on yours. But I think that we have seen through the economic downturns that we saw in '08 in northern Nevada and that we saw also during the, climbing out of the Great Recession and also during COVID, that we have been more resilient because of our strategic economic development. And certainly there's critiques about how we could do it better, and we can, we always want to strive to do that. But climbing out of difficult economic times, that's what we've been able to do because of your work and the state's work. So thank you for that and looking forward to continuing to see how we can make this the best community. In my opinion, our job is to make it the best county in the country, and we'll partner with you on that.
Madam Chair, thank you so much. So great to be with all of you today. Thank you for the time.
Thank you. All right, we're now going to move into our donations. If Commissioner Garcia could help us with those.
Of course, Madam Chair. I move to approve four generous donations to the Washoe County Sheriff's Office to support a few different initiatives, the Reserve Deputy Program, Citizen Core Program, and just general operations and critical needs.
Great, thank you so much. And I am looking for a second on that motion. Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. And Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on the donations?
There's none.
Okay, thank you. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Any opposed, please say nay. It's on your screen if you're looking for it. There you go. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. All right, we are now moving into our consent items. Do any commissioners have questions or want to pull anything from the consent calendar? I'm not seeing any. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on consent?
Penny Brock, for the record, standing here before you as a taxpayer. So I looked at, under consent item, you put 7F1 pertaining to the county's debt management policy. I was shocked that you put this within consent items. As a taxpayer, we want a robust discussion by our county commissioners and the staff responsible for this. This should not be buried in consent items. We know from the fiscal year that just ended, we're $27 million in debt. Where did that go? Where did that go? Do you have the Washoe Valley Fire Station anywhere in the planning, this debt planning? We need that fire station out there. If it had been built when it should have been, it would have cost $4 million. Now it's 16 million. So now Tom Daley has a plan. If you reopen an abandoned fire station, it can be done for $500,000, which I think you could take out of the budget. You find $1,000 here, $1,000 there for all kinds of things. Fire departments are really important, especially in our area, the Mount Rose Corridor, because we not only protect the Mount Rose Corridor... the Mount Rose Corridor, which is one of the beauties of our county, but it also protects the Tahoe Basin. So, again, I'm disappointed as a taxpayer that you're burying this agenda item in the consent items. Thank you.
Thank you.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. All right. I am looking for a motion on consent.
Move to approve.
Thank you. Commissioner Andriola, thank you, Commissioner Garcia. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into our block vote. Madam Vice Chair, do you have a block vote for us today?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I do.
Wonderful.
And that, this would be item eight, nine, 10, 11, 12, and 13, and that is in the form of a motion.
Thank you very much. Looking for a second on the block.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Madam Clerk, any public comment on that?
There's nobody signed in on any of the items.
Thank you. All right. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen.
Commissioner Clark?
Thank you very much. The motion passes unanimously. All right. We are now going to move into item 14. Madam Clerk?
Item 14 is a first reading. It will be Bill Number 1933, if adopted or introduced, to adopt an amendment to the Development Agreement for Sun Mesa Tentative Subdivision Map Case Number WTM04-001, to extend the deadline for recording the Phase Four Final Map to April 28, 2026.
Thank you very much. Looking to the board to see if the board would like a staff presentation. I'm not seeing anyone. Okay. Thank you for that. And is there any public comment, Madam Clerk?
There is none.
Okay. This is a first reading, so I'm looking for someone to help us read that into the record. By, or sorry, Commissioner Andriola.
Um, first term on the mic. I'll move to introduce Bill Number 1933, which is an ordinance amending the Development Agreement between Washoe County and Mesa, view by Desert Wind LP for Tentative Subdivision Map Case Number WTM04-001, and set the public hearing and second reading of the ordinance for possible adoption during the meeting of August 19 of 2025.
Thank you very much. All right. We'll now move into item 15. Ms. Thomas?
Item 15 is a discussion on possible action under the Board of County Commissioners' Rules of Procedures, Section 6.7, as requested by Commissioner Clark at the June 24, 2025 Board Meeting, to reconsider the board vote on, that took place on June 17, 2025, for the appointment to the public seat of the Washoe County Advisory Board to manage wildlife.
Thank you very much. And Commissioner Clark, this was your request, so I'll start with you.
Thank you, Madam Chair. This was my request based on a little background. We, we reappointed two members to this board. There was application process. People put in their names, their applications. And then, then we had another appointment, this particular appointment. Apparently, the, the application process was not reopened, and folks that heard about this appointment, based on the first reappointment of folks who were interested in joining, being considered for that board, put in their applications, or tried to put in their applications and couldn't. And, and it came to my attention after, shortly after, we approved this person. And I think that the, the process was flawed, and I think that we need to reopen this and consider the other folks that are interested in having their name in the application process. So, I'm, I'm requesting that we rescind this, or have another vote on this particular appointment, and reopen, and, and go through the proper channels, and open this up for folks that are considering, want to be considered as an applicant for this board. So, that's, that's my position on this.
Thank you, Commissioner Clark. And I, I look to DA Large on this. I have a question. So, when is the appointment effective? Because I, if it's effective right after the approval, are we removing Ms. Tejo from this position? Because I'm looking at the state law on removal, and, oh my gosh, sorry, I'm trying to pull it up. And it says, "Members of the board shall be removed by the board's accounting commissioner of the county, served for cause, including, but not limited to absences from three consecutive meetings, duty called board meetings unless excused by their respective board chairs." So, I just, I want to make sure we're in a good legal standing to even have this conversation.
Madam Chair, Michael Large, for the record, for the District Attorney's Office. In terms of the, this board has the power to reconsider the item in regard to this. The board, it is effective the day of this, but the Wildlife Board has not met, there has been no, there's been no action taken by the applicant. So, this board is empowered to, to reconsider it.
Okay.
And whether or not they do it. However, I would make note that in regard to Commissioner Clark's comments, this, this item is asking for reconsideration of what was previously heard, which is the 15 applicants. So, if this was to pass, the next item that we put on the agenda is the exact same thing. The only way we could go back out for more applicants is to make a determination that none of the applicants are qualified to serve on the board. So, that's one of those things. I want to clarify in regard to the background on the item. I believe there was two reappointments in May of 27, May 27 of 2025 at the meeting that were appointed to the sportsman's positions with the Wildlife Board.
Mm-hmm.
And then, I believe simultaneously, there were applications that were being done. Please correct me if I am wrong, that it was opened from a period of April 18 through May 9, soliciting applications for this position, which was for a public seat, not for the sportsman's seat. So, there was only one time that we solicited applications. The reappointments weren't solicitations. They were just reappointments of existing members. So, I think that provides a little bit of background for it.
Okay. Thank you so much. And I think, for me, it's hard for me to want to reconsider this, because our advisory board consists of five members. Four are representatives of hunters, trappers, anglers, or ranching, and only one of the general public. And so, I, I feel comfortable with the vote I took. And I don't know if this board even in the future wants to maybe change and arrest to see if we could be more specific about what that general public person could be. It could be a conservationist. And I think that we heard from members of the public who had a concern about this reconsideration, who said they wanted to see someone who wasn't necessarily a hunter, and necessarily representative of those items. And I think currently, right now, we have an overrepresentation of those folks. So, that, I, I'm not going to vote for reconsideration, but that's where I'm at. I will go down the line. Vice Chair Herman.
Thank you, Madam Chair. I have had a few people talk to me about this specific issue, and, and maybe there were some misunderstandings. I, I don't know how, you know, I wasn't involved in sending out any, you know, the application things and all that. But, if, if we have people that are in serious doubt, you know, about the way our process runs, maybe this is a good time to, to look at this seriously. So.
Okay. And Commissioner Garcia?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I don't see any flaws with the process. The application closed on May 9, and we received communication yesterday that helped clarify that for me. So, I'm not interested in, in looking at this item or bringing it forward again for reconsideration.
Thank you. And I guess, DA Large, just to be a little bit more precise about your statement. So, if we were to, if this vote goes in the way of bringing this back, and the board wants to open it back up, would all those 15 applicants be taken off as potential applicants for a future vote?
Madam Chair, Michael Large, for the record, just, my understanding of the process, the way, the way it works, and there, there are experts in the room that can speak better to this than I am. But, the way I understand it, because we're going to see this with the Parks Commission in, in next month.
Right.
Just as a way of background. When we have multiple positions, what we do is we open it up every single time in regard to if, unless there's a reappointment. We open, we open it up. And the list of candidates, if we contact each that have applied for the previous one, saying, "Do you still want to be included?" Because some people, there's changed circumstances and whatnot. If their applications are over a year old, we do not do that, because it's a new position. But, they reach out, and the staff does reach out to the applicants to say, "Do you want to be considered?" So, all 15 of those people would be considered, along with anybody else that would put in.
Okay. And I'm seeing Ms. Wilson has agreed. So, you wouldn't necessarily take those folks off the roster. You would just open it back up?
Yes, we would open back up, and then solicit more applications for a longer period of time.
Okay. All right. And Commissioner Andriola?
Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I think there's a couple things that seem to be at least bubbling up. I know that the agenda item is based on the reconsideration, but I do think that there is an opportunity to maybe, at a future time, maybe I should wait till the end, but I'm going to bring it up in terms of looking at the board, the Wildlife Board, having them look at also the recommendations of representation. It's not unusual, as we know, for various boards, depending on what that particular board does, to have a diverse group of individuals, depending, again, on what that does. So, I think statutorily, that's outside of our purview, but certainly, there's an opportunity to maybe look at the Wildlife Board, having that discussion, and then, you know, making the recommendations, because they do make recommendations to endow directly. That particular board, and doing a lot of research, and as you know, I, I really pride myself on, on calling all folks. I, I spend a lot of time understanding what the board does, looking at the composition, and looking at, you know, the various applicants and the qualifications, as you know, and its public record. I did not, my two recommendations were not the unanimous of my other colleagues here. And so, I, I have some strong appetite for reconsideration. I'm going to support reconsideration. I think this also calls for an opportunity to have everyone, and I'm not suggesting people don't really look at things, but I think we need to come prepared. That was one of the recommendations in the Raffatellis Report, is for all commissioners to do their homework. And I think, for me, I know that I, I again, really feel that there's an opportunity to have a discussion that is outside the agenda item, but to have a discussion with maybe the wildlife, look at that, maybe talk to cadence, but that's for another time. I also think that there's an opportunity for future opportunity for this board to look at the applications. I know that it was pretty recent when we looked at not retaining them for so long. But, there is a little bit of confusion in the sense of if holding on for a year, and I'm just thinking of staff time, considering the efficiencies that we need to look at, staff working really hard, and working so hard that maybe, you know, stretching themselves. We might look at some efficiencies in regards to when an application comes out, an application comes out, and not retaining any of them. It's not uncommon for organizations to have an application for whatever it might be, and everyone applies. If you applied before, you'll apply again. And I think that that's another opportunity for a future discussion for this board. But, in terms of, again, what I've already stated, I am going to support reconsideration.
And Commissioner Clark, any other thoughts?
Yes, I understand this is the, the item on the agenda is reconsideration of this particular candidate. And I think if we vote on this, and this particular person doesn't get reaffirmed, then it'll give us an opportunity to go and tune up the process and tighten it up a bit more. So, I'm going to, I'm going to support reconsideration. Thank you.
Thank you. I, before we take the vote, I just want to make a statement. You know, as it is, hunters and anglers are well represented on this board, and they constitute a majority of county advisory boards and the State Wildlife Commission. And I believe other voices are important when considering wildlife management. And these regulations and recommend, recommendations that this board does, which are very important, extend well beyond matters that are through hunting and angling regulations. So, I don't necessarily agree with Commissioner Andriola, but we can certainly have that discussion at a future item, because I think you're going to have a, a board that are going to choose their own. And I think that that, our job as a board is to look at those diverse voices. How, we all experience wildlife in Nevada open spaces, and it's not necessarily through hunting and angling. So, all right.
One more comment?
Yes, Commissioner Clark.
I just need to go on the record. I, I'm more concerned about anybody who wants to be on the board has an opportunity. I'm not a hunter. I'm not an angler. Don't associate with those folks. I don't know who does that. To each his own is where, where I'm coming from on that. So, this has nothing to do with who's an angler, and who's a, who's a hunter, and who's a conserva, a conservationist. I, I think that, for me, one of the ways to fix this, again, I hear this more than once, people try and get their names on, and their applications on, and they didn't get it in. So, that's what I'm trying to get fixed here. Hunters, fishermen, anglers, hikers, bird watchers, God bless them all. I don't do any of those things. And then, that isn't my position or where I'm coming from on who to support. So, just on the record for that. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Madam Clerk, can we please have some public comment?
First up, we have Jim Ray, followed by Mel Belding.
How's everybody doing? My name is Jim Ray. I formally held the seat that's up for discussion. I was here to advocate for Christie Marquesi as a possible candidate. It sounds like it's kind of taken a different spin than I thought. Commissioner Hill, I would just caution you, when you say a conservationist, hunters, anglers, hikers, we're all conservationists. And we put our money where our mouth is. We put our time, our effort. I know Christie has spent many, many hours putting in water sources for big game, through Nevada Big Horns Unlimited, through guzzler projects. That's conservation. Those animals, all animals use those in Northern Nevada. I've run into Christie and her family many times up fishing in Northern Washoe. And I really caution you on getting somebody on this committee or this cab that is, just stays within the McCarran loop, and thinks that hiking around Mount Rose and all that's Washoe County. Washoe County goes all the way to the Oregon border, and there's a lot of things up there that we discuss on the cab that are very important, that affect all wildlife. So, in reconsidering this, I just caution you on to, you know, what type of person you're actually focusing on to pick. I would look at somebody that actually cares about Northern Nevada, has a ranching background like Christie does, and her family in, in the Vaya area in Northern Nevada, and, and, and look at the whole picture, and not just somebody that maybe has a specific agenda item they're trying to get through to the Wildlife Board. So, that's what I have to say, and I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Mel Belding?
Good morning, Commissioners. I'm Mel Belding, lifetime resident of Washoe County. I've been attending Washoe County Cab meetings, and Washoe County Commission, or, excuse me, Nevada State Commission meetings for wildlife for over 50 years. I'm no newbie to this game. I believe that showing up is one thing, to, to give your opinion. But, I honestly believe that being involved in conservation efforts throughout this state is the biggest thing to help wildlife. I was aboard, on the Board of Directors for Nevada Big Horns Unlimited for many years. My job was construction of guzzlers, finding places to build them, and habitat reconstruction, rehabilitation. I took that job very seriously, most years spending over $150,000 doing so. We would build more guzzlers, or rehab more guzzlers than the state of Nevada would. I took this job seriously. But, my point is, with the numbers of mule deer declining like we are, and the numbers of predators increasing, we have a bigger job in front of us. And it's much more controversial. of predators increasing, we have a bigger job in front of us, and it's much more controversial. But we have to address that, and that's what I'd like to see this board do. For the past couple of years, we've had the Mule Deer Enhancement Program across the state. I'm proud to say that Washoe County Cab is the most active, having probably five times more meetings than all the rest of the state combined. Some have only had one. I've attended 95% of those. I've only seen one applicant at one of those meetings, at least one. And I feel this is something that should be looked upon also. I am a member of the public. Sure, I'm a hunter. I'm a conservationist, capital letters all the way through. But we don't need controversy on the board, and I think who you have considered, it's going to be a huge controversy. Rest assured, conservationists, hunters, anglers, well, not anglers, I'm going to just say hunters, sportsmen, we go by the North American model for wildlife, and that's pretty strict, and the Boone and Crockett rules. They're our governance. That's what we need to stay. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm looking for a motion.
I'll go ahead and move to approve the request by Commissioner Clark to reconsider the June 17th, 2025 appointment of Karen L. Taylor to the public seat of the Washoe County Advisory Board to manage wildlife in accordance with Section 6.7 of the Board of County Commissioners' Rules of Procedures.
Looking for a second on that?
Second.
Thank you, Vice Chair Herman. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, please say nay. Nay. And it's on your screen. And that motion passes, so we'll be seeing that item on a future agenda. We'll now move into item 16. Madam Clerk.
Item 16 is a second reading, which amends, will be ordinance number 1740, which amends Washoe County Code, Chapter 110, Development Code, Article 904, nonconformance, to revise and clarify provisions relating to nonconforming uses of land, nonconforming uses of structures, and nonconforming structures. It was formerly Bill Number 1932.
Thank you very much. Do any board members need a staff report on this? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Any public comment on this item, Madam Clerk?
There's none.
Okay, thank you. Then I am looking for a motion on item 16.
I'll move to approve as presented.
Thank you. Looking for a second?
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. We have a motion and a second. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's on your screen. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you very much. We'll now move into item 17. Back to you, Madam Clerk.
Item 17 is a second reading. It will become ordinance number 1741 if approved, and ordinance amending Washoe County Code, Chapter 45, Public Welfare, by repealing Section 45.430, which contains provisions pertaining to adult day health services, daybreak programs, making minor modifications to reflect gender neutral and/or permissive language, job title, and selection process, and updating language regarding program, funding, management, and availability. It was formerly Bill Number 1931.
Thank you very much. Do board members need a staff report on this second reading? I'm not seeing that anyone does. Madam Clerk, is there any public comment on this item?
There's none.
Okay.
Madam Chair, before you vote on this, I want to make a note for the record. There was a technical problem with the upload of the ordinance, the clean copy that was as an attachment. It has been, it has been submitted and re-uploaded and will be signed, the clean copy will be signed. It was done in conformance with NRS 241.020, Subsection 9, and there is no open meeting law violation in regard to that.
Thank you for the clarification. All right. If there's no other Commissioner comments, I'm looking for a motion on the second reading.
Madam Chair, I move to adopt ordinance number 1741 as outlined in the staff report.
Thank you, Commissioner Garcia. Looking for a second.
Second.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. All those in favor, please say aye. Aye. Any opposed, please say nay. And it's up on your screen. And that motion passes unanimously. Thank you. We'll now move into item 18. Ms. Thomas.
Manager, or, thank you, Madam Chair. Item 18 is your final public comment. Comment heard under this item will be limited to three minutes per person and may pertain to matters both on and off the commission agenda. Comments are to be made to the commission as a whole.
Thank you very much. Madam Clerk.
Trista Gomez.
These meetings are quick now. I've got to get through my morning stuff. I did want to say thank you to Ms. Andriola for the reconsideration on the board. I think that regardless of whether or not the current applicant stays or goes, I think that it just creates a more transparent process and one that people can be, like, you know, comfortable with. So, I think that, I was just, this was my first hearing, and I appreciate that. I listened to the Eadon presentation while I was at home, and I thought it was a great presentation. One of the questions I have is, what is the infrastructure that they have in Clark County that Eadon is sort of trying to emulate? When I go to Las Vegas, there are roads and new exits every single time that you go on. So, the infrastructure seems to be built well before the development. And I am just wondering specifically what they're doing in Clark County that makes it, you know, that we're going to try to emulate, or that we're going to try to define, or what that looks like. I think if we're going to do something like that, which it kind of sounds like we are, I would like to know the specif, you know, I think in public, we'd like to know what that looks like. There was a small mention of quality of life, and it's of a huge magnitude of importance to residents, this quality of life issue. We are seeing fatalities, huge insurance increases, insurance cancellations. We are seeing flood zones change. We are seeing just accidents that aren't fatalities. We are seeing huge increases in drive time, traffic time. We are seeing a decrease in quality of life over Washoe County in general. And I think if there was more residents who could be here during these times, they would tell you that over and over and over, their lives are impacted daily with a huge amount of, you know, of impact to their time and their money with the way that the infrastructure and the development are going. And I hope that that is addressed, open space. I mean, there, I don't see any open space in any of the development plans. I hope that that's something that we're looking to consider more. That's my child, who brings me, which regardless, so regard, you know, sorry about that. I just want to say again, our budget was record revenue, record spending, and proactively, we did not know in advance, or we did not plan in advance, I won't say we, because I wasn't part of that, there was no planning in advance of the increased revenue needs versus the, versus the revenue input. And so, I hope that that goes in. The manager, I'm just going to say this again, I hope that when we're talking about the manager, the hiring manager, that there's a full disclosure of personal relationships between Ms. Thomas and other board members, as well as a full survey of employees who've worked under and around her in the past if she is being considered for a permanent managerial position. That's all the time I have. I'll be back another day.
There's nobody else signed in.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We'll now move into item 19. Manager Thomas.
Thank you, Madam Chair. That's your Commissioners' County Managers' Announcements, Reports, and Updates to include Boards and Commission updates, requests for information, or topics for future agendas.
Do you have anything for us? Okay, Vice Chair Herman. Commissioner Garcia. Commissioner Andriola.
Oh, gosh. Thank you. Thank you, Madam Chair. I do have a few items. Thank you. One, I will be unable to attend the July 15th Board of County Commission meeting. I will be attending the National NACO Conference, and I need to go to that, being that I'm in a leadership position, and I feel it's also a great opportunity to bring back a lot of things that I hope I can when I return.
Share with us.
And I will be happy to do that. My second item is really a request. The City of Sparks just recently put in an opportunity for Adeline Farms, which has a provision that is now have agritourism framework. And there was legislation that was being at least proposed at the legislature that did not move forward. I sent the chair, and I've sent the interim county manager, the detailed information about that. The Lieutenant Governor's Office has also provided a lot of detail when they put the bill together. I would like to request that we look at also incorporating the appropriate language for agritourism for Washoe County. I think there's a great opportunity for that. I was thinking, I looked up Ferrari Farms, it's in Commissioner Garcia's district, as an example, and I think there's a lot of other places that can be throughout our community. I think Washoe County really creates a unique framework because we have a lot of unincorporated, and there's probably a lot of things that we don't even know about, quite frankly, that I think could give opportunities to spur economic development and help small business. So, I'd like to put that.
All right.
The third item that I have is in reference to something that's not new, that I've been asking, but I'd like to formally request, you know. One of the things that I think is really exciting about the recommendations for the Raftellus Report, while there's many, there was one specifically, it was actually on page 20, if anyone wants to look that up. But I'm thinking about what we could do with what the recommendation for Raftellus that recommended a work session. And the premise of the work sessions, as outlined by Raftellus, including the Board of County Commissioners being able to go into deep dives on topics, and also to prepare for any upcoming meetings. So, it's within that context that I'd like to make this request. If we could have a work session that really looks around the FY 2627 budget, I think that there's an opportunity to begin now, talking about the budget for FY 2627, what those efficiencies are, what the process could look like, having finance and staff and department heads be a part of that dialogue, and then have it be ongoing. So, not necessarily like, we need, in my opinion, and I've showed this before professionally, that we need to be talking about it right now and not wait to the end. And I know that people are hard at work doing that, so I'm not implying in any way that people aren't doing that. But I think for full transparency, I think for looking at things maybe differently than they ever have been, I think the past has given a platform of, you know, business and moving forward. And when you have a deficit, and I've said this before, there are huge opportunities for that. I mean, history has a great book of examples of when there's some type of struggle or challenge, something good comes out of that. And I think this is a great time for something good to come out of that and to look at how we move forward. There's been other organizations, public organizations, government, that have been looking at some of these things and been saving a lot of money and looking at even having a six-month process in place on a regular basis. And really, I'll use the term, looking in the couch for quarters. I don't know about you, when I was little, I never really could find them, but I always looked for quarters. We need to look for quarters, a lot of quarters. And I think it can also, really in a respectful way, let Washoe County, with department head feedback, with finance, with the lead from leadership and the interim county manager, begin that path so that we can look at trying to close the deficit and look at different ways of doing things as budgets maybe move forward on a, on a annual basis. I think it's a learning opportunity that essentially, we need to be looking for streamlining, efficiencies, you know, consolidation. It is not intended, I want to make sure that I'm very clear on this, this is not intended to look at, you know, laying people off or hiring freezes. I don't think that that is the approach we should be taking. I think we should be looking at all these other things and really seeing what, what is the true picture? What does that bottom line look like? What can we do as policymakers to help support finance and the hard work of all the department heads, the hard work of over 3,000 people here that care about the county? And so, we've said it before, that was one thing that was collective. We all care about the county. We care about staff, but we need to be looking at things in a much different way than I think they have been, at least that I'm aware of. And so, I look forward for the opportunity to consider a work session in the spirit of Raftellus recommendation, to actually have this dialogue, and also staff and finance and how that's put together. I'll leave that to staff, that's outside of my purview, but I do think it's important that we do it now and not wait, and have it be ongoing all the way through the process, whatever that might look like. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Commissioner Andriola. Commissioner Clark.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Just a couple of brief comments. We're only eight days into the new interim county manager's position, and I think she's doing a great job so far. I'm optimistic about the way things have, for me, changed dramatically around here. So, thank you.
Thank you. All right. Well, thank you all for a great meeting. We are adjourned at 11:26. Have a great day.